Okay, we'll go ahead and call the November 16, 2020 meeting order. This is meeting 2020-47. Up first, we'll have a prayer and then we'll follow by Pledge of Allegiance. And we have Dr. Sean Fletcher here to help us out with the prayer.
Well, we know that the word of God is the power of God unto salvation to everyone that believes. Believes in the name of Jesus. We know the name evokes hope, grants restoration, and provides salvation. We ask for that you touch us and lead us and give us the wisdom and the knowledge and continue to hold us in your protective hands. We ask that you bless those that need blessing, provide for those that need provision. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up in front, this is a consent agenda where we have the approval of meeting minutes 2020-42, a cereal malt beverage license for the Western State Bank Expo Center, and a cereal malt application for Freedom Petroleum, which is a Spiritville truck stop. I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for November 20, or 2nd, 2020, the work session meeting, 2020-42, and the cereal malt beverage license for the Western State Bank Expo Center and Freedom Petroleum, Spiritville Truck Stop.
No second.
Okay, with the motion second, any further discussion on that? Harry Dunn will go ahead and call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Up next is the approval for claims for payments. This is the amount of $449,000, $449,714.81. I'd go ahead and make a motion that we approve the claims for payment as presented. Okay, the motion second, any further discussion on that? Hearing done, we'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, come to the part of the meeting where it's open public comment. Please limit five minutes per individual and 15 minutes per topic. Final action may be deferred until the next county commission meeting unless an emergency situation does exist. The microphone is open, please feel free to come forward and share with us who you are and what you'd like to discuss.
Good to be commissioned. My name is Laura Williams. All right, you guys just have to come in.
Yes, how are you?
Well, that's a question for a lot of other days. The question that I have today is why? I had put together a presentation for you with all kinds of facts and figures and sources and references regarding a mask mandate in this county. I had to work pretty hard to get it down to the five minutes that I saw in your regulations you require for a press in the commission. And on the way here, I threw it out. You know why? Because you know. You're intelligent men with access to all the same information that I have, in fact, more. So you've seen those facts, those figures, those sources, those references. And yet, why has the commission not acted on that information? It's been seven months since the first diagnosed case in Ford County. We have heard crickets from this commission unless it was otherwise forced on them by the Kansas Department of Health and Environment. So then, why are all the decisions on this subject and the dissemination of information on it apparently the responsibility of Mr. Gilbert? Whether his official title is County Administrator or Public Information Officer, the last I checked, neither of those are elected offices. Yours are. Why has our own health department been muzzled on this subject? There are people who actually know what's going on. In fact, they're paid to know what's going on. And yet, if I call them with questions, they refer me to Mr. Gilbert. Why does Ford County not have an online dashboard like other counties of similar size? I've been told that this is so because you don't believe that we should have to be spoon fed information. I'm not sure that the residents of those other counties are infants. This is vital information. It's vital for our protection. It's vital for businesses going forward. And we have to go and paw through the largest flippant thing you can imagine, which is the KDHG information. Number six, why did this county turn down nearly $180,000 in grant money from the Kansas Department of Health and Environment? I saw the minutes on that meeting, and it was apparent that you didn't like the language that we might actually be subject to KDHG regulations. That leads me to the next question of why? Why is the county against KDHG regulations? I don't believe that they are there to actually make anybody's life more difficult. I think that they're actually there for health and environment protection. Also, and finally, why don't we have a mask mandate? Gentlemen, I am tired of asking why when this commission apparently finds it unnecessary to answer these questions. I'm tired of being diverted. I'm tired of going through third parties. I'm tired of being told, oh, I'm not the right person to talk to. If you're not, why would you care? Thank you for your time.
Hello, I'm hostess Christian, and I'm just like, get over what she said. But I'm the same way. I had to go get her information. Chris was the only one I was able to get ahold of. Mr. Cass, I've left phone messages and emails for you, and I think you missed them on Facebook. No response. Mr. Snook, you hung up on me when I was talking to you. You told me I was the wrong guy. You were the wrong guy. When I said, well, are you on the Board of Health? He said, nope, nope, you're mistaken, that's not me. And I said, well, Dr. Trotter told me that's who it was. It scares me that our own Board of Health doesn't even know he's on the Board of Health. And when I asked Dr. Trotter, I said, well, did you advise that you know this concern that you're a supporter of mask mandate? He said, I know this guy, so you're gonna go for it? And it didn't get me good to close my office at 3:30 in the afternoon. Good, and then they're already gonna tell me. I know they're not gonna do it. It was like you weren't even open to discussion, you weren't open to the information, you just weren't gonna do it. But, so what I want to know is, how do I get ahold of you two or anybody on and spend some time discussing things or anybody get ahold of you discussing? And does anybody know the state of Ford County COVID right now? Like, what are, does anybody know what our numbers are? The percent of positive testing rate, the seven-day rolling average, does it exceed the 14-day average? Do we have expanded growth? What's USD 443's threshold? How full is our hospital? How many cases in jail? How many healthcare staff are out there? Are we reaching uncontrolled spread, 3D spread? Positive to date, total positives today, active? What metrics do you use to make county decisions? Do you just guess or what do you use to make the county decisions? And when you use those, where do you get the numbers that point to them? I asked the city, and the city said, we don't even get the numbers. JD won't even give it to us. The only numbers we get, the only numbers we get are the three numbers on the KDHG website. That site, that site is a nightmare. I just don't know why we have to spend hours and hours researching just to get what every other county has, a dashboard. It doesn't duplicate like Jay said, duplicate the work. It's information that should be out there, and I don't know. I don't know why it's not, I don't. And next meeting, I'm gonna put on the agenda, but I'd like to talk to the gentlemen that I haven't been able to talk to about their thoughts. So, that's all I have to say.
Hello, gentlemen.
Hello.
I'd just like to say thank you that I don't have to wear masks all day, every day. And that I don't have, I'm not forced by our county government to wear a mask all day, every day in other places. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on. There is no unfinished business on here or legal counsel. So we will start, Mr. Chairman, before you move on. Ladies, we will have an agenda item later on here where the medical consultant will be in, and we'll be talking. So I didn't want you to think that this was public comment and that you've been, you know, that this is it, but we do have an agenda item coming up later. Will there be more discussion about that?
Thank you.
So please feel free to stay and, sorry. No, that's fine, yes. Okay, so first up on the Ford County Administrator's report is the Ford County Annual Audit Report for Fiscal Year 2019. Did they take off?
I think they did.
I think they did.
Well, I guess it'll need to be here for you to accept the audit. In years past, they've been here and we've been able to record visually and audibly audioize their findings, but that's all public record, so.
So, Mr. Chairman, we had the auditors here earlier in work session. They presented the audit. I would make a motion that we accept and place on record the Ford County Audit Report for Fiscal Year 2019.
I accept that. I accept that.
Okay, we have motion second. Fiscal 2019 Audit Report as presented by Kennedy McKee and Company. I'll go ahead and call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Second item is for the Resolution 2020-20, Proclamation of a Local Disaster Emergency for Ford County, Kansas, and that's for County Councilor Curbs and/or Emergency Manager Rex Beamer. It's just to extend the local disaster by 60 days, I believe.
Can you guys come up? I'm like, I'm like, visitors to the rooms.
Hi, and we're doing.
What's the expiration of our current?
I like to do 19. I'm sorry, I don't have it. And so we've still got the shelters going on here in town. We still have TUPSY going on. We're still getting EPE from the state and everything. So I think while we're still doing that, we need to go ahead and keep the resolution going. And we put in there that it's until rescinded and everything that way we don't have to keep going through this. When everything's said and done with it, you guys can go ahead and say, hey, we're through with this, and go that route.
So this language, this language is changing a little bit from previous one we've crafted.
Yes, sometimes we've always had a date, but at the end, unless it was extended by the board, this one just continues to tell the board.
If we, if we were to hold that to a date again, how long did we go on this last one? Was it two months?
60 days.
September.
Roughly 60 days. We certainly could do that if it was not a problem.
Well, we've just, we've been handed a little bit of information about these emergency declarations here and haven't been able to go over that, that information yet and read through that. And I don't know how much this pertains exactly to disaster declaration here in this county and how much it pertains to the one that the state has declared, but.
Well, in order for us to get the file from the state, we have to have a declaration because that's the way the chain of supply runs.
I understand that, and I'm just, I'm a little wary about the opening to date right now, at least until I can have an opportunity to read over this one.
I like her. About 10 counties and states that have otherwise, but all the rest of them have gone until rescinded.
And I guess it's not really open-ended if we have these, tired of saying them anyway, so. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2020-20, Proclamation of Local Disaster Emergency for Ford County, Kansas.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2020-20, which is a proclamation of local disaster emergency for Ford County. Any further discussion on the topic? Hearing done, I'll go ahead and call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you, Rex, for your service, my friend.
Thank you.
Next thing we have is the Health Department bid results.
Good afternoon.
Welcome. Tech team. Here now. All right.
I provided you for the last meeting, or I guess the meeting before that, I asked if I could go out to bids for a full-size SUV, and so we did that and received the bids, and we received two bids, one from Lot Motors for a caravan and one from Lewis Chevrolet for a Tahoe. It's my recommendation that we go with Lewis Chevrolet for the Tahoe in the amount of And there are grant funds available that are going to cover the total cost of that vehicle. With Lewis Chevrolet, as you'll see, they don't, they have an approximate delivery date of 10 weeks, but that's not a guarantee on that, so. But we do need that size of vehicle to transport supplies right there and have the ability to possibly pull a trailer if we might need to. And I don't believe the caravan had that.
The caravan did not have a, didn't even, didn't even have a tow package, did not have a tow haul thing installed with it.
And is that something that was in the specs?
Well, we asked for a full-size SUV in the specs too, so. But the, they, Lot Motors went with the option that we put for having a vehicle in stock, and that's what they come up with, with the Grand Caravan.
Yeah, that was theirs, was it? The vehicle was in stock, that particular vehicle, so. But regardless, the cab and the space that we needed was for the Tahoe, the full SUV size, you know, on the inside, so.
But still, 10 weeks is not gonna be a problem, and no guarantees is not gonna be a problem?
No. Yeah, it won't be a problem. If we need to move supplies and different things right now, Chris can, Chris can help us do that in interim and staff.
How, how often do you move a trailer?
Right now, they pretty much are doing everything for us, so we have the ability to move like to the testing site, but there will be times when we might have supplies coming up that we will need to have that ability.
And Angela is also looking to get her own message board to be able to use for fuel related.
Traffic control?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a joint like this, okay. I really like the price of the meeting, man.
Yeah. There is a difference.
There is a difference. And it's here.
I guess the specs were written and specified for a side SUV.
Yeah.
I have a trouble getting automobiles, everybody does, so I just wondered if that was a problem, the tendency of no guarantee.
Probably the no guarantee is gonna be like when we bought our pickups and shut down half of Wright when they were coming in.
Sure.
Didn't you guys have a similar situation? How long did that one take?
We're here in 2021. Possibility of receiving them now, February, March, but could be pushed back as far as airfare may.
I have no problem with it if we're not worried about the no guarantee and all that stuff.
No, I'm not.
Are you making a motion?
No, I'm gonna let you make the motion.
It's like you stated your opinion.
I stated my opinion about that no guarantee, because I know you can't give me that.
Do we know what trim line that Tahoe is? I didn't see it actually say anything about that.
No, we put in the, we put in the specs that that would be once the bid was accepted that Angela would be able to get the different options for trims. Mostly it was, the only thing it really had was it would be claw seats. So any colors or anything like that would be left up to you with this.
I didn't want to force her. Really just worried about?
Yeah.
Yep. Pretty good. I didn't know if it has certain engine size or, you know, on these, if they're all V8s.
Yeah, they're all V8s, but the caravan is only a V6.
I had a feeling that would be. How, how far do you take these things? Is this something you take on the road to meetings away from here?
Yes. And especially when there's, there's mandatory meetings that we have to go to. You know, sometimes I've been in Kansas City or, I mean, Topeka, things like that. Of course, we haven't had them lately.
Right.
But that will resume sometime, you know, and we will have those trainings to go to where, you know, seven or eight of us go. Yes.
Okay.
And like Angela said, that since it's grant money, it's money that won't be coming out of the, any, any fund out by the county, so.
I was really hoping to see a lot more bids. I was just saying that's something that just about every dealership can offer, but.
Yeah, and we put a window on there, and we thought we had enough time, you know, to put it out there.
Well, I think there might be something we see in the future with Lewis having three of the dealerships in town, they're gonna pick and choose which brand they bid and don't bid against each other.
Yeah. That's a good point.
So it probably is gonna be just Lobs, maybe G and D, and Lewis, whichever brand they decide.
We're having a lot of trouble getting them, I can tell you that right now. I find it's hard to pick up.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the bid submission from Lewis Motors.
I second that.
For 2021 Tahoe.
I second that.
All right, with motion second. I'll go ahead and call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, the next item is the Sheriff's Office to bid request for patrol pickup.
Hello, gentlemen. Question about the bid for the police patrol pickup, actually. Trying to hold on till next year, but I decommissioned one very recently, the expenses and repairs. Pulled it off and parked it for a hot seat plan, a hard-time vehicle right now.
Okay. Hard-time vehicle.
We had a reserve that we had sitting out there.
Oh.
Getting some miles stuck on it daily right now.
Not sure.
We don't lie.
Making it work.
Yes.
Gentlemen, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the Sheriff's Office to request bids for a pickup, a patrol pickup. No second. All right, with motion second, any discussion on it? Hearing done, I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item is for PAC record for the Santa Fe Trails Community Corrections and Flight 21, we've been out quarterly report.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. I'm coming before you today to get the approval for the first quarter report for the juvenile prevention program. First quarter was, was an interesting quarter, but I think that with everything that has been going on, my staff has adjusted rather well, and I believe that things are pretty much on target as they should be. The report reflects what we were doing in conjunction with USD 443 in our prevention programs. And I've got to say that we partnered really well with them to get through some of the, some of the obstacles that we were facing. Our JSRC coordinator worked out at their office in a school, the SOS building, for the majority of the year so far, fiscal year. And students moved back to our building today. So we're, we're pretty proud about that. We did work well with them, and I think that we're on target. Some of the programs, like the immediate intervention program, the, you know, we're, we're overcoming some of the obstacles, but I think as far as number-wise, that we will be well on target by the end of the fiscal year. And this report has gone, been gone through by the, by my advisory board, and they have approved it, and I'm asking for the Commissioner's true approval as well.
Okay.
Okay. I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the fiscal year twenty-one juvenile quarterly report for Santa Fe Trail Community Corrections.
I'll second it.
So we have a motion second to approve the juvenile quarterly report, call a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
The next item is the Kona construction request for extension, we, we thought, uh, Anna Williamson would be here, but she hasn't made it yet, so.
Yeah, I knew it.
We'll present, we'll add that, that letter for the, the recommendation from the architect.
So I'm sure you have the letter I received it Friday, and we can review it, and we can answer your questions as soon as we can.
Give me one second here, and I'll, leave that one in this, there is.
Gentlemen, one option would be to, um, hold them to the original date of construction end of the first extension, which is December seventh. If you remember previously, you guys awarded them over an eleven-day extension.
Right.
And so, this would take them to December seventh. From what we understand, they may not need the extension in the first place, so, um, if they don't need it, then we would need to give them the extension, so you can, you can make the motion or, um, address it that way, and that we keep them to the December seventh date. And if it looks like they're gonna need the extension, then we address it at that time.
The only thing I don't like about this one, um, is actually the date it ends on. I mean, that's typically a date that nobody works for the year. And, you know, I would almost say either with a past or before. Just, it's odd. And do they expect to work up until that date? Is that what they're basically stating with this? This is just a what-if, so we don't find them?
Correct.
And I. And, and if they, if they've said that they don't know whether they need that eighteen-day extension yet, we're still twenty-one days away from the, their first extension running out. I guess I'm of the opinion we, we wait, we wait till we get a little closer, and they have a little better idea of whether they're gonna actually gonna need another extension, and we address it then. We're gonna have another meeting on the beginning of December that'll be in between, uh, now and the end of their.
Right.
Of their first extension. Much as they, if we give it to them right now, they'll use it. I'd much rather wait until our first meeting and have them come back for it then, and say, have a better idea of them if they'll need it or not.
I know there's a lot of materials and components that are already onsite, so. We have a lot of available building days left.
Yeah, and I, I think, I think what's tough is, um, not being out there to hear, like, why they're behind, like, I mean, I'm sure, supplies might have been hard at certain times to get things, I just don't know.
There's, um, we haven't been able to have regularly scheduled progress meetings, and so there's a lot of that that I don't have the answer to, because I'm not a data as well. You know, we, we do make the, the property available to them anytime, they, they actually have access. We make the expo side of the building, if they need them there, available to them anytime, so, you know, we, we do what we can to meet their needs in this process.
How many days do we not work in, like, for this time?
Significant.
That's what I'm thinking also, I've been out there a lot, so, I see.
It's hard, I mean, it's hard to keep track of everything.
Well, I understand, and it's not your job to monitor what they were, and they have a contract just for them to complete.
Correct.
And I, you know, God bless you, you know, you're sitting out there wondering yourself, when they think you're just gonna be done.
You know, I can really only give you recent weeks, but then after that, I think possibly Dana might have that information.
What is our first December meeting day? Seventh? It is the seventh? That's perfect. I guess they'll know on the seventh, so it's more than easy.
So currently, there's a change order one, and is that what extended him to the seventh? Isn't that right?
Yeah. And, and that was the change order that reflected the ground that we weren't sure about, yeah, so there, that was something that nobody could foresee until we actually started out working.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we table this change order number two, Bill, for December seventh meeting.
I second that.
Okay, well, we have a motion and a second to table, if you need further discussion on this topic. Here now, I'll go ahead and call a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we gonna pause until?
No, that's what I was gonna say, we have, um, Dr. Trotter, the medical consultant, won't be here until after he gets off of work, so sometime around five, five fifteen.
Okay.
So, we can recess, and then re-adjourn.
Okay.
Reconvene.
Reconvene, yeah, reconvene, I'm sorry.
All right, I would make a motion that we reconvene around five fifteen.
What if you, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead. I was gonna say if you.
Offer a friendly amendment that we reconvene when the medical consultant arrives.
If you say earlier, we can always, we can open up later in an earlier time, so if we say five o'clock, we can reconvene at five oh five, or five ten, or five fifteen. But if we say five fifteen now, and he shows up at five, we have to wait till five fifteen.
We gotta wait till, yeah, all right. No, I was worried about the time, I guess, um. Can we say when he shows, or no?
I don't think we can do it that way, you have to have the time.
Kinda have to have time. It's five o'clock fine, then?
How about four thirty, then we can do the document like he does when I'm late for a point.
All right, I will change my motion to say five o'clock, say we reconvene at five o'clock.
I'll say.
All right, with the motion second, I'll go ahead and call a vote on that, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
I know.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're back in session here with the Ford County Commission meeting, this is meeting number twenty twenty forty-seven, and we are gonna start off with the medical consultant base coverings, just review and discussion here with Dr. R.C. Trotter.
All right, thank you for waiting for me, first day of the week, well, and having, my morning was screwed up with a deposition play down in Florida, property. Of course, I didn't think about the time zone, I said ten o'clock, so they called me nine o'clock.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it was ten o'clock in Florida, so it screwed up my whole morning.
Did you use the microphone?
Yeah, anybody can, you hear me okay?
Yeah.
I don't know if it, if it picks it up or not.
Okay, well, there's just tons of stuff you could look at, and as I was looking at this, this morning, this pretty much tells the tale of where we are in, in Ford County right now. That on the far left was back in our April and May and June, and yes, we got us down into single digits because we were testing two hundred people a day. Our primary site was beef packing, so we could isolate those people. It was still summer, schools weren't open, everybody was outside, and so, yes, we did a great job. Yes, way back there, we were the ugly stepchild of the state of Kansas for a long time, I got tired of hearing that, but then, there through the summer, we're able to, to bring things down, and now, quite honestly, in the last couple of weeks, we're just about equal to where we were back then. The numbers on the right are in the forties, the sixties, the top number there on the left was, I think, maybe eighty, and so, we've just been climbing back up ever since. I can't tell you specifically in Ford County, because I don't have access to that data. I can tell you statewide where the centers are coming from, uh, one of them is long-term care, which we know we've had that. For a long time, we were able to keep it out of long-term care, I think it just, we were lucky for a long time. Uh, second in the state is correctional facilities, which we don't have, third is still beef, meatpacking, third is private, uh, fourth is private sector, fifth is college, sixth is schools, they're about equal with religious. I found an interesting piece of data this morning when I was looking, that I found there were more cases from religious gatherings than from bars. Not sure what that means, but it was there, uh, sports and on down from there. So, where's it coming from? Kind of a mix, it's the patients we see in the office are a mix from all over town. People said we had community spread back in the beginning, to be honest, it was pretty isolated, and we had the plants to really help us, coordinate and do contact tracing, and put up plexiglass, they even have plexiglass on their outside picnic tables. And, and now it's really community spread, I see people from, you know, all over, all walks of life and things of that. If you haven't looked at some of this stuff, um, I can, I've got all kinds of stuff. You know, the state positive rates twenty percent, seventy-one percent of those are between the ages of eighteen and sixty-four, the gender mix is fifty-fifty. And, and what's interesting is that every age group, fewer are in the hospital than are, that stay home, even in the over eighty-five. The nursing home positive rate's about twenty-seven percent. Median age of death is eighty, youngest is eighteen, oldest is a hundred and seven. Death rate's about one percent across the state, and that's been, Ford has been a little bit lower than that. As I've said many times in the newspaper, yes, it's a low rate, but for that family, it's a hundred percent, so there's nothing to be laughed about. Hospitalization rate is about, just right at four percent of the positives. I talked to Jeremy Ravy this morning, and they are up to eleven cases in the hospital, five in the ICU. Considering that they have seven beds in the ICU, that almost maxes them out, and the other six are up on the floor at this time. So we're having a surge. Uh, our hospital has done a good job, today it's a little bit, could be a little bit spooky with five of the seven ICU beds full. I've heard lots of stories in various places of having, I mean, I know we had to ship one patient to Denver last week, because there was no place to ship them, and we had to ship out. But I hear all kinds of stories of people having trouble to ship, matter of fact, I think it's, is it called Life Watch now? I talked to Clay Cox the other day, just about how things were going, they make anywhere from six to, six to ten runs per twenty-four hours, transferring patients, every twenty-four hours, anywhere between six and ten runs, they're transferring somebody from one place to another facility. Uh, they've actually started a subset of their company called Bedfind, where you call them and they help you find a bed, so finding beds is a problem for people.
Doc, where, where old do they service?
All over state of Kansas.
Okay.
Yeah, and they've got a contract for Kansas, and they go up into Colorado, and they go into Nebraska, and they pretty much cover the whole area. So, uh, with all that, you know, short of going back to what we did there in the spring of, of shutting everything down, which nobody wants to have happen again, the whole issue of masks comes up. The mask is effective if you're in crowded groups, it's now being shown that it protects you and it protects them. It's a small price to pay to hopefully stem the tide, I was on a listserv early this morning with a bunch of county health officers. We, we think it probably is gonna take more than masks to turn that around like we did before, but that'll probably be the vaccine more than anything. But at least, the simplest and the only effective tool you have at this point is the mask, and to get people to wear them. I'm kind of of the, of the mindset of it's, it's mask or six feet. Now, if it's twenty, if you all six feet apart, maybe you'll be out of mask on, but I'm not too freaky about us sitting here and where you all are sitting. But certainly, back there and other places, yeah, I think the mask is important. Uh, I know people say, well, this mat, you know, it's not properly fitted. It's the same mask I wore in the O R when I did surgery with Bill Garcia all these years, so it, it does work. Now, it's not pretty, but it works, it's the same stinking mask we wore, we didn't tighten them up any, there was a little time there when we started doing total hips and total knees, that we had a bubble mask for a while, with ventilator tubes out the back. We quit that pretty quickly, because it didn't prove to make, do any better than just the mask and, and good cleaning, so. You know, people who, and now they think the cloth mask is as good as what I've got, uh, the N ninety-five might be a little bit better, but, uh, it's not totally necessary. I mean, I can show you tons of slides, if you don't, I mean, you can just, everything I talk about is Katie's, um, and, you know, hearing from other people, but all the statistics, you can find all kinds of stuff, uh, death rates and age rates and everything you wanna knows right there, so. But that's the most telling one, is that we have continued a surge, uh, and how high it's gonna go, we don't know. Hope not much higher than we're hitting right now. There's a slight tick, but that's at the very top of that, only because, you know, this is primarily last week, and you don't, you know, you have the weekend that slows down those first numbers, and that's why it cycles like that. Whenever you go in and look, you kinda have to, everybody talks about the fourteen-day numbers, I find that too much math for me. I don't wanna count back fourteen days and add them all up and divide them, I usually use seven. And, you know, so the seven-day average is about forty a day, positive for camp. Questions?
So when you say there are seven beds, how long does somebody stay in the hospital? Is this just an overnight thing?
Yeah, they're usually, if they're in a second floor, more than likely, it's gonna be five to seven days. ICU could be at least that or longer, of course, they move from ICU back to the floor, and, you know, so, you know, it's, if they're not short stays, they're not one-day surgeries and you're in and out, uh, we're kinda lucky, we're still doing elective surgeries. I, you know, again, this is somewhat rumor, but it's good contact, a friend of mine was getting surgery in Colorado today, and that was gonna be the last day of elective surgery for a while.
So when you're saying there are seven beds and five are full, those are surgical patients?
No, they're, uh, they're just, I can't say that they're coke, there, there are seven ICU beds and five of them have paid. There, there are seven ICU beds and five of them have patients. What that means is if you get any COVID, get more than two COVIDs coming in that need beds, we'll be out of them.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah, I'm not saying these are all, when I, when I talked to Jeremy, um, I'm, I, I didn't ask him if these were all COVID cases. I should have.
They are.
They are. I didn't get around to asking him that. I presumed that, but then I thought, oh, sometimes they, they do send us a, a list of everything and they tell us how many COVID. Now, we're not, but if you have that and confirm that those are all COVIDs, which is a little high for us. We've often been somewhat less than that. Never had that many in the ICU at one time. So, I mean, it's, you know, we're, it fluctuates. The hospital is somewhat, you know, the ICU is getting full. And these things, obviously, you understand these cases take a lot of resources. You got to go into full PPE and the time that they take and ventilators and all of those things that they need. We try not to get them on a ventilator. I do think our hospitalists have done an excellent job of being on top of the current trends on how to treat COVID. And I think that's kept our mortality rate down.
I feel like the therapeutics over the lifetime of this, this pandemic have really improved over that time.
Yes, they have. They've used convalescent, they've used desiriver. They have access, well, not to very many doses. I was in a meeting last week. It's a monoclonal antibody that they give as an outpatient. We've only got like 20 doses of that, so we could burn through that pretty fast. But there's very, very strict criteria on how to give that. Like I said, we could easily burn through that. In the office, we're not like it was back in the surge. We only tested from one to three because we had to get, we wanted to get samples out at 3:00 to get them to the lab. So, but I'd be doing 18 tests and 16 of them would be positive back then. Now, it's more like the 20% numbers. So, we're in a surge, that's all there is to it. How can we mitigate it? It's, it's kind of all over the place. And without shutting things down, that's why we're here to talk about the mask. I would want to push for the measures that we had to do before. I was able to work, but not everybody. Yes, we slowed down. We felt it. We were able to keep our staff because of COVID relief money and we made sure they got it. Went through to them because they were doing hazard duty as far as we were concerned. It was tremendous effort on everybody, starting at the very front because they did all the interviews and decided who would be parked out behind. If you ever came to our COVID clinic, be parked out behind in one of the stalls. And in my EHR, I would say, uh, Bay Two, Green Chevy, Alonso, and that's where I went to see. Now, we've put some garages out there anticipating that during this, well, through the winter also. At least it protects us when we're, they're in the car, they're fine. We're standing outside whenever raining here. The other day, it was kind of nice to go out there and stand underneath something, so. It is what it is. We're surgeon. You know, I can't say when vaccines will get to Western Canada, just, you know, express and wagon train. You know, the problem with the Pfizer vaccine is it's that minus 70 degree thing is going to limit its distribution significantly. The other one that just came out doesn't have that temperature requirement, so that would be an issue.
Well, the more you'll know. A pill that you can just take and not a injection?
Well, if, if any of you, see, I'm old. When I was around, you were too. Around during polio.
Thanks, Doc.
You, you should remember polio. Scared the crap out of us. We didn't go swimming, we didn't go anywhere. If we hadn't left Gove, gone to California, my brother probably wouldn't have had polio because we went out there before my brother got all the shots. And you start off with shots and you got those for a while and then you got the sugar. And to me, in some ways, I think polio was more telling because you could see the people that got it. And, and now, yeah, you really won't know somebody had COVID unless they have a lingering coughing if you could. So, we went through several vaccines. And now, I mentioned polio to some young people and they don't even know what it is. They get their shot when they're born and they don't know anything about it going down the road. So, I was around during, oh, Hong Kong flu, which we didn't know anything about it. We just know we got kicked out of KU early. They sent us all home. Mary was in the hospital in Sterling and I didn't know it because we didn't have cell phones. Honestly, she didn't know it because she didn't remember it. And then I went through AIDS and it took us years to figure that one out. So, the same thing will happen here. There's so many questions we have, why some people die, some don't. Why, wives, my son's wife did not get it. He did. I mean, he picked it up at school. We know that's where he got it. And, but yet, you know, they were together before he got it, before he quarantined in the basement. So, she didn't get it, the kids didn't get, you know, all kinds of, well, Dr. Conack got it. Part of that, I know his wife hadn't get it. There was a scare, but nope, she's fine. So, it just doesn't make any sense to, it's a little, sort of where it comes from, how it's transmitted. There's all kinds of theories about blood type, which you're sitting there scratching your head. How could that be? We don't know. For two or three years, I don't think somebody's doing the research to sort this out for us. Why some people get into trouble and others don't. I mean, I've had a lot of 75-year-olds come to the office and survived it, it was fine. But, you know, the, you know, the death rate, the lowest, the youngest is 18. When he died, and I, I don't know enough about it, he could have had a lot of COVID related. And we still, had a two-year-old had it. I called, soon as I got the report, I called mom in a panic. Huh, he's up running around. He tested positive on a PCR, because that's all we can do. We have a, two Abbott machines, but we can't get supplies, so we couldn't grab a test if we wanted to. So, all of our tests with a PCR that goes to LabCorp. We need to do more testing. We need to be sure that we can test and then isolate people. And the problem you have, anybody, you understand, this one test, you know, like my son, he tests positive, well, three people go out and get out of the system. The wife is a teacher and two kids went to school. So, it doesn't just impact the one person, it impacts everybody that's around it.
Yeah, we saw some data on here earlier today that, that, number one, we, we are doing more testing in the state. And, and maybe that explains partially about why we got more cases showing up here too. We're, we're on track to, we're on track to 150,000 tests in the state this month and that's 30,000 higher than the, than any of the rest of the months we've had. That's, that's, that's pretty significant, I think.
We're just finding them and hopefully, if you don't find them, you can't isolate them and slow it down. But still, we went through the summer and we were testing pretty much at the same rate. It dropped off. The Expo State, pretty busy, but the rest of us dropped off quite a bit. Express Wellness, they do some kind of a rapid test. And if you're not symptomatic when you do that, it's not going to be very good, so. You need to be symptomatic for the antigen test to be accurate. And we think that's the current feeling. Some day eat those words, but that's where we sit right now. So, at our office, we don't send you for a rapid unless you're symptomatic. And most of the time, we're just still, you know, even those that are in our office, you know, all we can do is the PCR. So, we send it into LabCorp. I tested Friday because I'm going to have a little surgery next Friday and I still don't know my result. When I get home, I'll log back on and point you out. Maybe I shouldn't have been here. But that, that's irritating. It's, I carried my, that, during that, I carried my computer with me to the latest. And I literally sat there and called people every Saturday morning and every Sunday morning about their results. And I had 10 or 20 of them.
I had a, uh, business owner that rents, uh, large apartment complexes and he had a gentleman that he knew was on quarantine and he walked into his payment into his office and was wearing masks. And he, the guy just freaked out. He was like, I'm in a, you're in my office and I can't escape from you and I know you're positive. And he goes, well, I got my mask on, so I'm fine. I think sometimes that mask gives that false sense of security because he doesn't think he can spread that to him.
You know, it's better than nothing, but there should have been other alternatives.
Yeah.
You know, for doing that. We just, I'll be honest, I disinvited all of my family for that to get it. Wasn't easy. But, uh, six of them would be in the school system in one fashion or the other.
Sure.
There'd be 11 of us in the house for the weekend. And I just, I can't work from home very well. And I really didn't want Mary to get it, so I basically disinvited her. And I haven't seen one of them for quite a while because he didn't come to rodeo because we were the hotbed. And then he gets it. So, that was tough to do, but it's, and that's my message now in the office. Every time I see somebody, what are you going to do next year? Don't do that. You know, I have 20 people. That's the kind of thing that we're going to see, that's, everybody to go active, whereas you don't. Because somebody may die out of that. You don't know. Some of your older people know, because the median age is in that range, so. I would advise them not to this Thanksgiving and wait for next Thanksgiving.
If we make it to next Thanksgiving?
Yep.
That's, that's where I'm at.
We'll make it.
We have, no, Doc, not all of the way.
No.
No, that's true.
You know, we, we have, I had the same conversation with my family here just over the weekend as well. We had been planning to get together for Thanksgiving. You, you mentioned some 74, 75-year-olds. My parents are your, are your patients and they came in. Dad's got a powder that you could think of, you know, and, and came through relatively well out of that deal. You know, and thank God for that, but, um, but you know, they get tired of being alone after a while too. And, and that's, that's another piece of this that, that we get to think about is, is not just the medical aspect of it, but the mental health aspect, so. But thank you very much for all of your insights and input.
You know, I, I believe in the mask. I don't believe it well, or whatever it's worth. I, I put it right in there with speed limits, seat belts, can't drink and drive, can't smoke in public places. So, I, I put it in with that same group. And this will be a temporary restriction, not a permanent restriction on your rights and freedoms and whatever, so. Anything else?
Do you, do you look at other countries and compare what's happening in the States overseas?
I don't spend a lot of time. I'll be honest. I'm busy enough trying to take care of medicine. You know, and I, I worry about, are you, same thing you would, are you getting the truth?
Right.
I have enough trouble getting the truth in the United States, let alone getting it from other countries. I certainly question any scientific data from the Far East.
Yeah.
And Russia, you know, I just wouldn't trust it. Let me tell you a story. This is how the US makes drugs. My daughter works for Pfizer in McPherson. And one night, we were together, I mean, we're in the same house and I heard her phone go off and she, I heard her talking. And so, in the morning, I asked her, what was that about? And she says, well, we have these large, you know, like you might have in a lunchroom that you move food around. We have those with, you know, dosages of, of drugs. And, uh, and one of them alarmed because they were refrigerated. And, and so, we weren't sure if it was any good. I said, what'd you do? We threw away 80,000 vials, not doses, 80,000 vials. That's how the US cares about their public. She and three other people from McPherson, a couple summers ago, went to Italy and fixed the plant in Italy. They shut the plant down. It could make drugs and sell them in Europe, but they weren't good enough to come to the United States. And so, they, three from McPherson went over and fixed it, the plant over there in Europe. Every now and then, when I'd be at the hospital, I sat in a meeting one day and I'd get a text from her. Expect a shortage of, something, I don't know what it was. Because she'd just gotten 30,000 vials and they were all dirty. They were little pieces of glass. So, I threw them all away and started over. Every time you hear about a shortage of medicine, often what happens is you've got three companies or two companies, let's say, three companies make it. One company's making 80, 90% of it, they decide to quit. But then you've got somebody like Pfizer, it used to be Hospira and it used to be Abbott. They've got to now gear up to bring it back up. So, how, you say, how can we have a shortage of a common genomase? And, oh, some company just decides not to make them anymore, or somebody else has to hustle and play catch-up. Courtney is in charge of the rendesivere quality control that goes out of McPherson. I moved down there a couple of weekends ago and she was waiting for some data to come in before she could sign off on the rendesivere and let it be released from the plant. So, it's being made in Kansas. It's being, well, being bottled in Kansas. They, they ship the product in and they bottle it up. The quality control is just phenomenal in the US plants. You can trust whatever's coming out of the US plant. So, I'm waiting on my elec, which is coming out of probably France or Germany. But it's not in the US and I've had it, I paid for it 30 days ago, for three months, so I. And they called up and wanted to sell me some more. I said, wait a minute. I've got a, I've got a little plan for you. I got to get what I've already paid for first. And I have the tracking orders and I went through post office, had the tracking order. They said it's not in the US yet.
Yeah.
So, I understand what you're talking about. I, I worry, I mean, everything is, and she had, you had trouble with India because they, they don't know how to say I made a mistake. That really makes it hard to do quality control. When they, you know, and that's Courtney's, that was the problem with Abbott when they had a plan over there. It was just like, it was a cultural thing. So, you need just a little bit of humor.
Yeah.
So, I want to tell you a story. If I catch it, then I don't have to worry about dying. So, what my wife will kill me. Anything else? Okay, thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you, gentlemen.
They might have big, long enough questions for Dr. Tron.
Anything else?
If you have time for questions, gallery is.
I don't have another meeting for a little bit.
Okay.
Hey, Dr. Tron, we talked on the phone. I'm Constance Christian. Um, I just have some follow-up questions for you. Can you kind of speak as to what all the rumors going around about hospitals getting extra for COVID? That you're not making millions of dollars for COVID patients?
Well, I can't tell you a lot about the finances of the hospital. I can just say that you use more resources with COVID. I mean, you're, you're going to have to have full PPE, you're going to go through more masks. You know, we didn't ever have to do that before. You're going to see, I'm going to bet, that hospitals and some offices will be redesigned because of this. Because one of the problems they have, as I've talked to them, is that, you know, you, you dine your PPE and then you go into the room. Well, when you come out, you would like to be in a safe room to take it all off so that you don't spread it all over. So, they had to set up places that you can take your PPE off. So, a lot more costs go in. You're using more ventilators, you're using more people, higher, more expensive drugs. So, I don't think they're, they're having a windfall because back during all of the, when we had the big surge, all the elective surgeries went away and that's where their money is. And so, you know, they took it a big hit in revenue all through that time. And so, that's why we'd like to see them be able to keep, you know, doing elective surgeries and being able to take care of the other people. So, um, so they do spend more resources and so I assume they're getting higher reimbursement, but I can't speak to it specifically as to amounts.
Well, if you want me to, I can. My father had COVID and was in St. Francis in Wichita. And the bills that we received after medical was up to $380,000. And that's after his full-blown Medicare policy and he has Plan F, took care of it. So, then we had to refile that to get them to understand that they have to pay that, not us. So, just so you know, they, they are making that amount in the hospital.
From what I've heard, they get 20% extra. The Medicare, I mean, they, they get 20% extra for Medicare. But that doesn't, I mean, that doesn't mean that they're, I, I know they, like doctors, they get more because they're spending more. I mean, there was a reason why the legislature said you were going to give you I mean, there was a reason why the legislature said we were going to give you more because, like you said, we're spending more. So it's not like, hey, let's mark this guy down as COVID and we're going to get some extra money. That was my point, is if that's correct, is what I'm trying to say.
You know, they won't say they're COVID unless they test positive.
Thank you.
Now, you have to assume, you know, people have questioned you, what do I put on the desert agent? Well, if you have comorbidities and you get the flu, then I'm probably going to put flu as the number one and then the comorbidities underneath. Because prior to you getting the flu, you were doing just fine.
Exactly.
So I've had to put COVID on not too many, but a few actually have to put, now I've kind of got to put COVID positive, like, that's the difference. And now they're making another restriction, so maybe nobody will die of COVID because I got to fill out another report. And say, look, I filled out the desert agent. I've done it for you. Come on. Just because you want me to fill something else and fax it to you, which will probably get lost, I can do it electronically. But that means creating a whole account and all this faxing.
Well, that takes me to my next question about comorbidities. I mean, everybody says, oh, every time he says somebody died, well, what was his underlying conditions or what was his comorbidities? It doesn't matter, does it? I mean, does it really? I mean, why do people keep saying that? Because the ban is still dead. And if, who in here doesn't have some, you know, comorbidity that, you know? So I wanted the public to know about the comorbidities, that they're not, you shouldn't feel safe because you don't have a comorbidity, I guess.
Well, and I, you know, like I said, there is an eight-year-old guy now. Who knows? I don't know anything about him. Could have had diabetes or cystic fibrosis or whatever else that could have created. We just know that everybody, the more, you know, if you even just get pneumonia, if you have diabetes and maybe heart disease and you're overweight, it's going to be, you know, if you're at higher risk of not surviving irregular bacterial pneumonia than you would otherwise. So it adds to those. And then, again, I'm just surprised at the seventy-five-year-olds that I see in my office that actually these are, a lot of these came out of the plants and so here they are, seventy-five, they survived. And I say, well, what are you going to do? I'm going to Mexico for a month. They had, they were just going to take a vacation. They just survived something they're going to go.
Well, that just drives me, one next question about him saying, you know, this might be the last Thanksgiving. Yeah, that's sad and yes, the nursing homes are, you know, they're lonely. But can you describe what it's like on a ventilator? I mean, that's, I mean, not that it's going to happen, but if, I would rather this be my last Thanksgiving with my mother away than everybody come to dinner and grandma gets sick and die on a ventilator. To me, that's, I think the ventilator is kind of, I mean, traumatic. I mean, it's scary.
Yeah, we try and do every, you know, again, I don't do inpatient anymore, but talking to Dr. Alaska also, they do everything they can to keep them off a ventilator. They've found prone oxygen and everything else. And once they put you on a ventilator, it's probably, you're not going to make it because that's, they've done everything else before that and tried a number of other options first. And as he said, he really hates to because that, he knows that that probably will not be a survivable patient. Yes, ma'am?
I'm sixty-five and I have asthma and all kinds of respiratory problems.
Why are you here?
Thank you. And I had, I had COVID. I wasn't even hospitalized. I was very, very tired, you know? I had a cough. I've had a cough for sixty-five years, though.
Do you think that that means that your case is the...
I'm just saying it is a case.
Yeah. Yeah, well, like I said...
My case is as valid as any other case.
Yeah, like I said, I can show you on the KDHE website and you can go in there and see this, you know? At every age group, no matter what age group you have, fewer get admitted than do, even at the over eighty-five. Now, it's about forty-five, sixty-five at that age group and down to like two percent in the younger age group. So, no. And this is the thing, we don't know. Why do even somebody with a respiratory condition get it, cruise through it, maybe have a little extra cough? And yet, other people that have maybe not that don't survive. We don't have those answers. And until you get those answers, everybody's, you know, in medical perspective, everybody's at risk. And we can't say that just because you have comorbid things, you're going to not make it. But it's statistically more likely that you won't make it if you have some, the more you have, if you start adding, I have this, I have this, I have this. But you don't have to have any to not survive. And again, like I said, the death rate's about one, one point one percent.
Well, we've gone through what I would say is our meeting. If you can stick around, the people can ask you questions. I think at our point, you can probably go ahead and close the meeting down for us and we'll move on.
Do you want to hear from sports heads?
Yes. Sorry if I am missing out on the next part. But yes.
So I know Angela made one of the speakers. She's probably made one of the speakers. I'm sure you can give them a round of applause, please.
Thanks again, Doc.
You're back.
Yep. Say hi to Mary.
Thank you, Dr. Trotter.
Sorry, Doc.
Oh, yes.
Please say hi to Angela.
If anybody wants to, you can come and see me.
Hello. I just wanted to present to you with a letter from the state epidemiologist, as the Department of Health and Environment. She kind of, the state epidemiologist kind of puts forth, you know, some facts there for us to look at on mask usage and what they believe, you know, that will help mitigate. And as the health officer of Ford County, I would recommend a mask resolution for Ford County. And if you have some questions about this, I could try and answer it or give the answers for you. Do you have any questions?
I don't. I appreciate that.
Yeah, and also they feel, you know, that it's a cost-effective way to, you know, try to mitigate the spread of COVID with base cover. Okay, thank you.
Do you have a copy of that University of Kansas study?
I'm sorry. I can get it. I don't have a...
That's something you can email to us.
Okay. Sure, yeah, I can get that.
Yep.
I can probably get the other one, too, for you.
Yeah.
Or the articles listed also.
That'd be great.
I'll get that for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, Dr. Trotter touched on a lot of the information that I was going to give to you about hospital availability and things like that. I was able to have Rex pull a report that I don't have access to in the morning, but I know that it's available. The hospital demographics are broken up by region across the state. And as of this morning, across the state, there were one hundred and fifty-seven beds left. Now, that doesn't mean they have room for one hundred and fifty-seven patients. If they don't have the staff for their beds, they can't take the patients. Since the beginning of this, we've taken a very proactive approach at firing EMS and I have had, zero people get sick. I can't say that about the other departments in the county. The problem is, we wear N95 masks on every call. Do the cloth masks help? I don't know. Do they hurt? I don't know. But we are at a point where we need to do something, no matter how trivial it might seem. I am very protective of my rights, but I also am a realist and I see where we're going. I don't know, I don't know that masks are the option, but we need to do something.
Where do you think we're going?
I think we're going to see a point where, well, we're already there, actually. People with other medical conditions, there's no room for them in the state of Kansas. They're shipping people to Denver, as Dr. Trotter mentioned. Recently, it's last Friday, they just want to ship to Oklahoma City. My son-in-law is a surgeon at KU and they're at capacity. A lot of the hospitals have went to no visitor policy, so these people that are having other medical conditions are going to Oklahoma City or Denver with nobody. But if there's anything we can do, I don't know if it's getting David at the weed department to fog alcohol across the whole town three times a week. I don't know what to do. At the beginning of this pandemic, I wasn't scared, but I am scared now. There's been unprecedented number of cases and pretty soon, there's going to be no room at the end. And then we're real close to that right now.
I appreciate your fear. Ladies, I appreciate your fear. But really, I feel like that's what it comes down to, this side versus this side, is whether I'm afraid, whether I'm not. And you said we're seeing unprecedented numbers, but we're not. We're not seeing more numbers now than what we saw back in, it's on the graph, got our addicts.
I think we're seeing a lot of other things that are taking up the resources that we use.
Okay, I get that. I get that. And there's, and there are, there are other, there are other things that have happened leading up to this that have spanned over the period of years, Rob, that have left us here with less hospital beds than we used to have around.
Oh, we agree.
Okay. Where our rural hospitals are going down the tubes by the handles, okay? And those are real things. I get that. But the numbers you're talking about, we're coming into where we are. We're in closer contact with people. We've got kids going to school. We've got all those things that are happening and we're seeing more numbers. We're also testing at quite a damn bit higher rate than what we have at any other month so far during this pandemic. We're going to beat it this month by thirty thousand tests in the state if we continue on the rate we're at right now.
Just to clarify, I'm not scared to die.
Thank you, me either. I'm not scared of much.
But not, Sean. But it's not me.
Exactly.
I get that. I'm pretty easygoing, dude, and I just, I just, I wish there was something that we could put a finger on it, say, let's do this and make it work. I don't know that the masks are the answer.
Okay. And my point to that, in our decision that we end up having to make up here is the idea that we have to do something so many more times leads to the wrong thing.
I know.
And, I mean, really, and I feel like this about the city right now, and I'll say it, is this is about optics.
Oh, gosh.
This is about optics.
What's optics mean?
They're doing it because...
Oh, her.
They're doing it because something has to be done. That's the, that's the thing.
I don't know, maybe they want to keep some people alive. How should you, you should address that with Dr. Trotter.
Hold on one second. Hold on one second. One person at a time.
I agree with you. That's why I use the disclaimer, I don't know if it's the answer.
I understand.
Could I, could I get your email to send you?
My email's on the website.
I know, and you didn't notice my email, but there is, I didn't take... I went and got like the top medical experts in America. I thought, tell me some top experts. Stanford, Harvard, Kaiser Permanente, I went through all those and I looked at every one of those, every one of those, sixteen, twenty that I went through, every one of them had a study, peer-reviewed study with recommendations to wear the mask, the American Hospital Association, the Lung Association, OSHA, the WHO, CDC, everywhere. If our top experts are saying they work, how can we ignore that they don't?
I get that, Constance. I get what you're saying. Each and every one of them have put out a study about medical information.
More than one study.
More than one study, all of them, every one of them.
The show Mask Book.
Decision that we get to make up here, and the thing that you're having a hard time, I think, grasping, is that public health and medical decisions are not the same thing.
Why?
Because there is way more aspects to public health than just the medical aspect.
But should public health not be guided by facts?
Science.
By scientific information?
Yes. Here's another fact. The mental and emotional toll that the things that are being done to, on the anything must be done type of attitude, we've got reports that say as many as half of our students are exhibiting signs of depression.
But where is that report? See, to me, this is anecdotal. Should I see that report?
I'll get it for you.
Okay. And to me, if it's...
Suicide rates.
If it's one report, is there...
Suicide rates and calls are up as much as three hundred percent.
But we're not talking about another lockdown.
And domestic violence cases.
But we're not talking about another lockdown. We're talking about doing everything we can to avoid another lockdown.
Yeah, because I understand that, like Dr. said, and this is going to be, right now, we're overflowing. It, one person, they affect three. So in December, what we are seeing now is going to be three times as that. That's what, we're past the critical spot. I understand that you, there's mental tolls, there's loneliness, but at some point, you have to look and say, it's saving lives. I'm sorry, Grandma, that you're lonely. And if that's true, then we need to push the mental, we need to push mental health coverage instead of throwing out the mask. This is the, this little simple thing right here is the only thing that is going to keep us, you know, and at what number would people, what number would you have to see before you're scared, you know? I made a, I made a video of faces of COVID for Ford County because people aren't understanding, you know, who's dying. People ignore it. If we, for one, I'm mad as hell because I have an associate with applied science and I knew six months ago, and I've been preaching for the last six months, that this is exactly where we would be. I said, you wear your mask or we're going to be getting a shutdown. And that's, that's, and everyone said, you ain't going to make me shut down. If we don't do something, our retail is really going to suck. Our schools are going to suck because nobody can teach. The teachers can't teach if they're out sick. Mental health can't, mental health if they're out sick. What do you think is funny?
When we opted out of the mask mandate back in May.
Yeah.
We recommended, when we opted out of that, that everybody continued to wear their mask, they continued to social distance.
And it did no good.
They continued to observe the safety measures and we've continued that throughout.
What did you see?
So you'd rather us be fined or put in jail?
Nobody's allowed to.
For, yeah, that's what it is.
We're not going to start into an argument in the gallery here. But we have, we have done that, okay? We've continued to do that. We continue to do that to this day.
And the number of numbers.
Now, what is the difference going to be by us mandating that they have to wear a mask if, if this, up to this point, has not worked?
If you look at Denver, for example, just take a trip to Colorado. Nobody, nobody throws a fit. If you mandated it, I guarantee... If you mandated it, I guarantee, I feel, I feel vulnerable.
They're going to throw in huge fits in Colorado.
But I feel vulnerable sitting here because I'm sitting here with my mask on and it can still get in my eyes. And people are blatantly sitting, just sitting blatantly, we have departments, educated men, your health experts, your health, your very own health experts are telling you, this is not some YouTube, your health experts are telling you, this is what we need to do, and your people are discounting it. It's like, if it was mandated, it wouldn't be, they're going to put you in jail. It'd be just the same thing as my grasp being too long. It's the city ordinance. They're going to come and talk to you, but more than anything, the minute you mandate it and put some teeth into it, that enough right there is going to take a big chunk of this out. Because I guarantee you, none of these ladies would be sitting here.
I wouldn't be if they'd let me in.
That's exactly, but they wouldn't do it. And, and businesses are, businesses have, you guys need to be the bad, the bad guy. They can say, hey, man, you know, we didn't want to do the mask thing, the city council made us, the government made us. What I see and what I think, y'all are looking at voters. You know that you're going to totally flip off your voter base and that's going to, you know, come back, because that's what the, they said, well, let's put pressure on our, our councilmen. My, my, my last point is, if every Angela, Dr. Trotter, if every one of your, if medical experts, yes, I'll stand, touch my hands because I've touched my face, but if every one of your medical experts are telling you and every top authority, leading authority in America is telling you, they've already considered the suicide rate, they've always considered the, they, they know, she knows, she's not, she knows about the loneliness and she still says, this is what I recommend. If, if, how can you ignore, they, they're not stupid, they've already looked at all.
Mischievous, I say that we're ignoring.
Thank you very much. I finally got in. Let me tell you something, young lady. We've heard your point of view, both of us, okay? We heard Mr. Tasset Fadistio, and we got to get on with our life because we could be here till midnight and you still were talking. I've had enough.
Mr. Chairman, with your indulgence, I would like to go down the questions that the ladies posed on the open public comment and just hit those quickly. As asked why and asked and stated that you hear crickets from us. The statements there about that we post daily, the tests and the positives and, and,
The only things that we have access to are the rep and positives. That's it.
And that, okay, so, so the other outfits, that test, don't send those results to us, they send them to the state. So we have to wait for those to get back.
You're really trying those too.
And that goes to your dashboard, okay? We've decided that we're not going to put out something that's inaccurate. And if we put out what numbers we know to be right, it's not going to match up with KDHE numbers.
Every county does. I sent you, I sent you that.
Constance, please, I'm going to talk to you, don't interrupt me. So those numbers aren't going to match up on a day-to-day basis. So we can, we can put out the numbers that KDHE has for us every day and just match those numbers. But why would we do that?
So everybody can know them.
Everybody can know them by going to KDHE?
No.
It's kind of a huge slide to drill through.
We don't know Ford County deaths. We don't, you can, you, you show me how, okay, you show me, like Dr. Trotter said. Dr. Trotter said, I can't get Ford County numbers. He said it right here. He said, this is the numbers I can get. There's some numbers I can't get from Ford County. We don't know how many deaths are in Ford County. We don't know our, we don't know our positive percentage rate. We don't know anything like that. We can't judge anything.
Hundred and eighty thousand dollar grant, okay? There's a clause that was on that grant that we found unpalatable. It would take away, I felt like, our local control.
Of what?
The clause was, is that we will abide and abide by old KDHE and CDC guidelines, both in the past and future. So we had already opted out of following KDHE guidelines as far as the mask mandate in the past. And by accepting that grant, there's a cute little string attached to it there that takes away that local control.
Ford County was the only one that didn't accept it. I called the state. Ford County was the only one in the state of Kansas that had any problem with it.
No, there were some other ones that did and they ended up accepting it afterwards.
Kansas, the state told me the Ford County was the only one that had a problem with it.
Well, being in the minority doesn't scare me either.
It does if we don't have enough money for testing, but continue, please.
We didn't say that we wouldn't fund testing. There was never mentioned that we would not fund testing.
Or contact tracing?
Or contact tracing.
Well, because right now, that's not really happening.
I wish Angela could speak on that. You see, she really can't speak anything without the approval, but I know, and I have, people sent me pages and pages, contract tracing is not have, I mean, it's not happening fast enough. It's not happening correct enough and I don't, maybe, I don't, and it's not Angela's fault. It's not Angela's fault. What's happening is, she's coming here and asking for, she's saying, we need a mask on because it's going to get out of control. She's busting her butt down there. She's already busting her butt and she's saying, I need help. And pretty soon, she's not going to have control. It's just going to be too much.
We're super aware of the job that Angela's done.
I don't really think you are.
And in fact, I had a meeting, was it Friday? Friday? I asked for a meeting to make sure that we were still doing trace contacting.
I've been quarantined twice and I was never contacted by anybody from the county or the health department in either case. I was notified by the person that exposed me.
I can, I can tell you that on the flip side of this, my wife and I have cooked food for six different families and there was a massive amount of tracing through that, and that's how multiple of those families were found. So.
She, we're not saying she's not doing it. She's doing it, you know, but she's busy and busting her butt now. In three weeks, and I, she can back me up if she wants to, in three, in first December, she's going to be triple overloaded with what she's doing right now if we don't pass, even now, it's just too late right now for them. But even, and come to further, she is going to be buried and the hospital's going to be buried. And there's going to be, like Dr. Trotter said, we're not going to have, we're, I don't have, your medical experts said it better than I can. If you don't do something, we are, and it's not scary, it's, it's fact. It's fact.
And another point, just, just to put it out there, that the hospitals should report the deaths, the county doesn't, just so you know that.
I called the hospital and they referred me back to JD.
You can call the hospital, they're probably not going to give that information.
They referred me back to JD.
Because they're trying to just move it, move it around.
We don't provide them a pair, we know how many deaths there are.
Right.
I have no idea. Like I said, like I said when I first sat there, getting information out of this, like I said, I emailed you, sir. I called you, I called you, mister, you wouldn't talk to me, I can't.
And that brings me to my last answer, the last question, is how do you get ahold of us? I will always return calls that you leave messages, if you will let me know who you are, okay? Don't tell me you didn't because I saved the message.
I didn't say my name?
You did not say your name. I have no idea. I get those, I get those calls, we got those calls whenever we opted out of the mask mandate. I would get calls from California. I'm not answering all those calls.
Well, I will call you, leave my name.
If you need to call me, I encourage you to call. Please leave your name and let me know.
But more than anything, I need to show, I need to be able to, way to send you, send you my sources, because my information doesn't come from AdLibs or the, this, my source comes from CDC. You know, it's, it's hard science. It's, it's nothing, it's hard science. So I need to be able to, if you see that, but I don't know why we do that, because your own experts are sitting right here telling you. It's not, your own experts are telling you, you need to do something and you still don't think you need to do something.
Thank you, ladies, for coming to the meeting today. Tried to answer the best I can the questions that you posed on the, on the deal.
Well, could I say something?
Oh, well.
Could I say something? Or do you have that number?
Well, we're,
One quick thing. I like to represent my generation.
I'll leave it up to the chairman. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, my generation went through a whole lot of communicable diseases. So did my parents. So did my grandparents. I mean, a whole bunch of stuff. And I'm here to tell you that we probably would have never won World War I or World War II if we taught our children to hide behind masks and become cowards.
Oh, for God's sake.
Now, every parent has their own choice to trap the child the way they want him to go, right? When they get old enough, they make their own decisions. So I just want to say that there's a very wise ancient proverb. It goes like this, perfect love casts out fear. You in Kansas should realize that you have a great general to look back to. That's Dwight D. Eisenhower. I got to sit in a room with his granddaughter the other day. There's no way he would make a great general with troops under him if they had to wear a diaper mask because they were so cowardly afraid of the unknown. We face death every day, ladies and gentlemen. It doesn't make any difference what you do with your immune system, but when a time like this comes along, you might want to reconsider what that means to boost your immune system. Pull back and take care of yourself instead of eating junk food. That's not going to help you. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so next we have upcoming meetings. There's the Kansas Association of City County Management Annual Conference, which is a CM twenty twenty, and it's a virtual meeting. It'll be on December first through the third, twenty twenty, with Employee Appreciation Lunchtime, which is December tenth, twenty twenty, at the Expo Center from eleven to two. And we have the Public Officials Exchange, which is Thursday, December seventeenth, twenty twenty, in the Occidental Room in Root Hill Museum at six thirty P M. Last part of the meeting, I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Five seconds, Pat.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Here you go, call vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.